Before we get tonight's meeting going, we had an unfortunate death here in our Long Beach family of our CSEA workforce, an untimely death of Mr. Tori Parker from our beach maintenance. So if we could just take a moment of silence to think about. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach held Tuesday, March 20th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Bendo?
Present.
Councilmember Mandel?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Vice President Diamond?
Here.
And President Aramo?
Here.
Let the record indicate the presence of Acting City Manager Michael Tagney and Corporation Council Robert Agostisi. We will now have a salute to the flag.
Would you lead us, Ms. Guma?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Again, thank you for coming. We will have our good and welfare at the end of the regular scheduled meeting, but first we start with the city manager's update.
Okay. The Phase One of the fully federally funded Army Corps of Engineer project, Beach Protection Project, is complete. All the jetties have been built up, rehabilitated. Workers finished the last, the first eight jetties in September and the remaining seven, spanning from Point Lookout to Long Beach, covering over seven miles of coastline. The summer beach season should be largely uninterrupted this season, which is very good news for us, and we will start the replenishing in the fall where we will be adding about 1,000 feet of beach per week until the sand replacement is completed. And once completed, the coastline will move 50 to 75 feet away from the shoreline where the, where the high tide currently is now. Next summer, next spring, the Army Corps plans to build the sand dunes, the 17-foot sand dunes, parallel to the boardwalk and walkovers and ramps built over the dunes and down to the beach. Bids for the sand replenishment and the dune walkovers were due last week, and the contract is expected to be awarded next month. Last Tuesday, we had a special parade, followed by a celebration at the MLK Center in honor of extraordinary wrestling achievements of Jacory Tima, a five-time New York State champ. Now, most of us know that high school's only four years, so that means in middle school, Jacory was competing and winning and was a state champion in the eighth grade. We hope to celebrate with a future parade when Jacory wins the gold in the Olympics in 2020. Elijah Rodriguez, a back-to-back, also New York State champ, and we thank all who really gave this, this young man, this, this dedicated young man, proper recognition for such an unbelievable feat of winning state champion five times. At our last meeting, the council voted to rename the recreation center Robert L. Carroll due to the fact that Mr. Carroll is a Long Beach legend, worked at the recreation for 47 years, and his favorite phrase was "A happy childhood lasts a lifetime," and Long Beach is recreation. Five, some of his accomplishments are five neighborhood playgrounds, the Boardwalk's Arts and Crafts Festivals, our summer, our beach summer content series, antique car shows, Easter egg hunt, summer camp programs, the Tiger Shop Swim Team, numerous boardwalk races, and more. In addition, Bob has been very philanthropic with the Long Beach Lions, the Arthritis Foundation, and the same area of the aisle food pantry. Additionally, our own Dave Frazier, now posing as Gina Guma, was our representative on the Clerks and Treasurers Association's Island Harvest Food Drive, and this year, 2,381 pounds was donated, creating 11,218 meals. So that, that's really a good thing for us to have. Mothers Against Drunk Driving gives an award to each police department for the police officer of the year that does the most for, to eliminate drunk driving and to the most aggressive police department. For the second year in a row, Long Beach Police Department has been named as the Police Department of the Year by Mothers Against Drunk Driving, and not only do we get one officer nominated by their organization, but Sergeant Lee Nielsen, Police Officer Joe Garafalo, Police Officer Nicholas Rooney, and Police Officer Rocco Walsh are also among their officers of distinction. And that's just from little old Long Beach. Folk to Funk Music Festival. You really need to pay attention to the website, Arts Council, because there are a lot of fun things going on. Get to watch Council President Aramo square dance to a little folk to funk, you know. It's really a fun, different type of entertainment. You don't have to stay for the whole show, but you might want to expose yourself, you know, a little bit of a curveball. The city's 57th Annual Easter Egg Hunt will take place on Sunday, March 24th, at 10:00 at the Recreation Fields, and it really is a great tradition regardless of your denomination or your affiliation. We invite everyone to come down and have some fun and hopefully win a prize. Additionally, as Councilman Mandel stated earlier, on March 24th, we do have a march against gun violence, and we are a place that really has, has a stake in this game. We went from having a number of shots fired every year to only one shot fired in the last 18 months, or 19 months now, and that's a tremendous improvement thanks to ShotSpotter, which was fully funded on a grant, and I think this is truly appropriate. If a community has a ShotSpotter program in their community, they should then demonstrate against gun violence. Thank you, sir.
All right. I just have one question, just to be clear. You mentioned the Army Corps of Engineer bids are, should be open and going out. That has nothing to do with us? That's?
That has nothing to do with us.
The Army Corps chooses what contractors and how it's going to happen, and all that is on them.
When you're paying the bill, you get your check, you get to pick.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner, if I could just, I just want to add two things. First of all, the wonderful pamphlet and program that you have in front of you, I just want to take an opportunity to thank Carrie Ann Troy and Tracy and Gordon for working on the project. It's, it's really, it's really wonderful. Also, if you can, if we can just have a brief update on storm preparedness since what's happening outside, I think our DPW commissioner's here.
Yes, John, John has been preparing for this all day. We've had numerous meetings, and he'll give you an update.
Good evening and welcome to spring. I think it's, I think the mic's off. I think I turned it off. Okay. I said, "Good evening and welcome to the first day of spring." Yes. We've been in constant communication today, the Acting City Manager and myself. In addition, I've also been in contact all day with our street superintendent on, on our plans as the weather conditions change. As of the last report from the National Weather Service, which was at 4:30 PM today, we are expecting six to 10 inches of snow. That heavy snow should start tomorrow morning between 5:00 and 7:00 AM, which will probably mess up the commute a little bit, and it's expected to end on Thursday between 3:00 and 5:00 AM. So we're talking about a 24-hour storm event. We're also expecting strong winds in the 35 to 45 mile an hour range, and also, we just had a new moon, so high tides will be one to three feet above ground level. The next weather report from National Weather Service will be tomorrow morning at 5:00 AM. The storm could change. We have been preparing all day in our water plant, in our wastewater plant, all the generators have been tested and ready to go in event of any kind of power failure. All the trucks have had their plows attached and sanders reinstalled on any ones that we took off. It's really not cold enough for us to do any pre-sanding or salting before the storm because the roads are warm enough now that they should absorb the first inch or two. Once we, we will be in contact with the police department all night. Once the police department tells us roads are starting to get slippery and we're up to about two or three inches of snow, we will get out and sand and salt at that point. If not, we will go straight to plowing. So we're prepared, our troops are ready, and hopefully they're getting a good night's rest right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Just one additional piece of information back to the Army Corps. I participated in a call with them yesterday.
Can you hear the mic?
I participated in a call with the Army Corps yesterday. There were two bids received, and it looks like the bid is going to a company called Great Lakes Dredge and Dock. They were the low bidder, and they're also planning an April 18th public session to inform the public about the next phase of the project. Okay? Here in Long Beach, it'll be the 19th in Lido.
Thank you, Councilmember Bendo. Okay. On to the agenda.
First public hearing is a resolution granting waiver of off-street parking requirements regarding premise 248 West Park Avenue, street floor, Long Beach, New York, regarding a real estate office.
Can the, is the business owner here? Yes. Come on up. State your name and address for the record.
Bart Cafarella. My home address is 315 Woodhole Lane, Sable, New York.
Okay. It says "real estate office," but the nature of the business?
Yeah, it's a real estate office. Another one in Long Beach, right?
Right. And how many employees do you plan on having?
Well, we technically don't have employees. They're real estate agents, so there, there could be upwards of 20 agents there.
Okay. And will some of the employees, will some of your agents be Long Beach residents, do you know?
Yeah, most of them will be.
Most of them are Long Beach residents.
Hopefully.
Do you expect any curbside deliveries?
No.
You don't?
We do not, no.
Okay. And the hours of operation?
Generally nine to five. We can go as late for evening up, evening hours as well to accommodate the public.
Is it appointment?
Yeah, it's appointment only.
Appointment-driven?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Anyone from the public speak in favor or against the parking waiver? Nope. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Great, thank you. Happy to be back in Long Beach.
Thank you.
Second public hearing is for the purpose of providing all persons and representatives of organizations with significant social, economic, and environmental interests an adequate opportunity to publicly present their views on proposed activities for the city's community development program for the 2018-2019 44th year.
Okay. I think we have a presentation by our Community Development, Director of Community Development, Mr. Marv McMoore. Oh, we have a screen too. All right. A reel? Okay, so we'll come down. The council wants to come down.
All right. My name is Marv McMoore, and I'm Director of Community Development, and the purpose of this public hearing is just to speak about some of the developments with community development and for us to be authorized to apply for the Community Development Block Grant. And pretty much how this works is the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, is allocated from the Department of Housing and Urban Development at the federal level down to Nassau County, which is down to us. So this is us trying to apply, again, as we do for every year, for the 44th time, to get CDBG funding. So I thought I'd just give a brief update of where this money has been going to. So first, some quick facts. 2,712 or 8.3% of individuals in Long Beach live below the poverty level. 12% or 12.2% of those individuals are 18, and 21% of individuals under five live below the poverty level. So that number is pretty astonishing to think, you know, almost one in four students or young kids that you see under five lives below the poverty level. In the county, the median household income is $110,000, $110,800, $110,800,000, and 56% of Long Beach makes less than $100,000. And I put some education numbers into there, and obviously, almost a quarter of our population is over 60 years old, and 9.8 have disabilities. So we will go to the next slide, and this map pretty much shows like what areas in Long Beach are eligible for the CDBG grant, and that's pretty much based on census data that shows us like, you know, where, you know, poverty lies, and you can see it's a bunch of the West End, the North Park, and the East End on the South Shore where a bunch of our seniors do live. To the next. So CDBG has some eligible, excuse me, strict eligibility requirements, and the projects must meet three, one of three national objectives. They either have to provide benefits to low to moderate income persons, they must aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blight, or three, provide funding for projects that have a particular urgency because existing conditions pose a serious and immediate threat to health and the welfare of the community. Obviously, we've got a whole bunch of CDBG money after Sandy, the disaster recovery money. So just to give you some ideas of some recent and ongoing projects that we've done here. Go to the first. We've, we've leveraged CDBG funds to make improvements at the MLK Center, such as college readiness space, Performing Arts Center. We really did it up. If you guys haven't gone to MLK in a while, you should go check it out. We did basketball court at St. Mary's, as well as some recre, some additions to their food pantry. We do youth employment programs, particularly with Long Beach Latino Civic Association. The LBNY Arts Council, we saw Elizabeth up here earlier, refund a bunch of the First Fridays through this, as well as community arts programs at the MLK Center and at our senior programs. And of course, City Hall ADA compliant bathrooms, we did that on the fourth floor, and now we're working on the second floor for the courts to make them ADA compliant for folks with disabilities. And of course, our senior programs at the MLK and Magnolia are completely CDBG funded. So future projects, very quick, some of the things that are in the pipeline that you'll see across the community in the next few months. The micro enterprise assistance, and this is a really cool program to try to help employ lower, low to moderate income individuals and start those sort of businesses. That will be rolled out within the next few months, and the council will vote on this at the next council meeting. Substance abuse services, we've partnered with LBE Aware. I see Judy back there to try to figure out how we can make an impact and leverage CDBG funds to really help with train our youth against substance abuse usage, and obviously the opioid crisis, that's really wreaking havoc across Long Island. And New York Church of Christ, we're going to be improving their pantry to make it ADA accessible. And the Leroy Conyers will park, and the North Park will be getting a community garden, and we'll be starting to engage the public on that. So that's pretty much, you know, the recent and ongoing, as well as some of the future developments, and I wanted to open it up, obviously, to anyone who's here who has any ideas. As a employee, I'm always looking for innovative things that the community can do and what the city can do to leverage as we apply for these funds, but that is all, and thank you for your time. And you can get in contact with me any day. I work nine to five here. Marvin McMoore, you can ask for my, if you call 431-1000, ask for me, I answer my phone, and I'm around here all the time. Thank you.
Marv, just stick around for a second. Go to the other side.
All right. Thank you, Marv.
You're welcome.
So I just have a question. Have, we've seen a decrease in this funding year after year after year?
Yes, and that, that presents some challenges. I believe back in the 90s, this program used to get $1.2 million renowned down into the $400,000 range. Some of this is constraints from the federal government. In fact, President Trump has actually recommended that this program be cut altogether. I don't think the Congress is going to actually do that, but there's been significant federal pressure to decrease this, and obviously, since it comes through the Nassau County, we're always competing with other communities. But I've been in touch with the county, and I'm very, I'm looking forward to having an increase in funding. I don't think we'll get back to the 1.2. We're going to try and obviously apply for those projects, but I think we will see a significant increase.
So the state is not involved at all? It's federal funds through the county and then from the counties to the different municipalities?
Correct.
Okay. And the other question I had is, you mentioned that the areas that are eligible is through census data?
Yes.
But who, who determines that?
Sure. So the census is taken, obviously, every 10 years, so the next one will be in 2020, and, you know, they'll go door-to-door in Long Beach and collect information, and that information gets compiled, and the federal government and the county determines, you know, where the need is within the county.
So they actually supply us with like a map or?
Yeah. The map that you saw came from, directly from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and we do get data based on each census tract that they're considering, and we can challenge if we wanted to.
Oh, okay. Anyone from the, anyone else from the council have any questions or comments? Nope. Anyone from the public have any comments about the CGB, CGBD funds? Yes. Mr. Hodge, come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
James Hodge, 95 East Fulton Street, Long Beach, New York. Just wanted to speak on behalf of the Long Beach Martin Luther King Center. One, I would like to, as the chairperson of the board, I'd like to thank the city for all of the collaborations that they have done and upgrades to the Martin Luther King Center and in partnerships to help out the community with programming. And just fixtures to the building, community development funding has helped turn the whole Martin Luther King Center around. Many of you that have been there for the, recently saw some of the fixtures with community development funding and also private donations and different companies coming in and donating. But again, I would like to thank the city for the furniture, for the senior program that the seniors asked for. We are there two days a week where it's a light lunch, but table games, and just the seniors being able to come out from 10:00 AM till 2:00 PM. And again, I just wanted to really, from as a resident, as a president of the Martin Luther King Center Agency, just thank the city for what they're doing to help out with community development funds, and we look to continuously working with the city and those funding, those funds that come in to serve the community, we just look to continue helping the community. Thank you. Sorry, I'm just a little off tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge.
Additionally, last week, the MLK hosted the Chamber of Commerce, and I received a tremendous amount of feedback from the members of the chamber, most mainly Brian Berkery today, on how impressed they were with how wonderful that facility is.
Yeah, it's come a long way. It's great. Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes. Come on up. Ms. Alessi? Just state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Helen Alessi. I live at 800 East Chester Street, and I'm also here to thank the city council and Marvin McMoore. Had a wonderful meeting with him last week where he briefed us on the expectations of the CDBG block grant and what was expected from us as we apply through the process was very, very detailed and very helpful. Just wanted to give you a sense of what is going on with our organization in terms of our young people. Our young people are expected at this very moment to carry a lot of weight and burden, especially the immigrant population of Long Beach. With almost 17% of the population here being Hispanic, we are trying very hard as a very small and yet hearty organization to bring youth development programming to young people so that they can excel in their families, their communities, their careers, and college. So we have developed a program called Live Leaders in Victory. The idea is to help young people get prepared to become the leaders they hope to be, and yet, that has been truncated. Why? Because at this very moment, young people are asked to lead, not in the future, but right now. And so Long Beach Latino is trying to work with the whole population of young people in, in Long Beach to give them the skill set to do movement building, to understand civics, our Bill of Rights, our preamble, and to give them the power to get out there and make the changes that need to happen. I want to thank Commissioner Tagney personally for his coming out for our immigration forum, was very well attended at St. Mary's, and I think the largest stressor a lot of our young people are feeling, that they are from mixed-status families, they are American-born children, their parents are not, and their parents are in great fear of being deported, and the young people are feeling that stress. So a grant like CDBG helps us really expand our summer programming to allow more than 20 young people go through this very rigorous writing, skills development, college essays, all of the, the whole nine yards in partnership with the school district. So I thank you. I hope you can continue to support us. We need it, and our young people do as well. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all your work. Anyone else? Ms. Vining? Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Judy Vining, 410 East Broadway, Long Beach. I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you as well. We have a different kind of youth leadership program that we're looking at. It's, it's not so much directly talk about substance abuse, but it is to empower kids or young people in the underserved communities that we have, that we have funding so that we can take them to national conferences, have them learn leadership skills, learn how to advocate, learn how to then bring those skills back to their own communities and develop programs that are from them, as well as to develop the leadership skills amongst the other kids so that they can, part of the money is to bring in trainers to, after the kids go to the CADCA or whichever, can get them to, and we have funding to bring chaperones with them as well so they're perfectly safe, and these are national programs that will really empower these kids, and goes hand in hand with what everyone else is doing. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for your work. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none, next item.
Item number one is a resolution granting off-street parking requirements regarding premise 248 West Park Avenue, street floor, Long Beach, New York, regarding a real estate office. Hearing has been held on this item already. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the County of Nassau for the purpose of undertaking a community development program under Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended and Title Two of the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990 as amended for inclusion in the city's community development program for the 2018-2019 44th year. A hearing has been held on this item already. Item number three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for engineering services for the preparation of a technical report for the area known as the Woks.
The Woks is an area in Long Beach that is bordered by Park Avenue on the north, New York Avenue on the west, Beach Street on the south, and Lindell Boulevard on the east. When that area was established, water mains were put underneath the ground as they obviously are, and then we allowed, or that the building department at the time allowed houses to be constructed on top of the water mains. These water mains are now approaching 100 years old. We were very fortunate in dodging a bullet this past year. We've had a great number of water main breaks through. We've had a great number of water main breaks throughout the city, and fortunately, none were under the Walks because we might have had to excavate a house in order to get to the main. This is a program now to reevaluate how to abandon those mains so that they don't present a danger in the future and deliver water to the houses that are impacted by abandoning the drains. This company has come up with a very, very interesting approach. The original plan was to put the water mains down the sidewalks of the Walks, which would cause tremendous disruption, real inconvenience for the homeowners. So instead, this company came in, one of three companies, with a design to bring a water main down the, the streets, Walnut and Olive and Beach, or Walnut and Olive, and access the homes with just a two-inch line. So instead of digging up the whole sidewalk to put in an eight-inch line, we are going to do that on the main road, and then we're going to do a very small project through the Walks so that we can give homeowners access to their properties, have minimal disruption, and at the same time, protect the entire city's water system. How'd I do, John? Okay.
Want to come on up, Commissioner? So, yeah, anyone that knows, knows about our water system knows that the Walks is potentially a big accident waiting to happen. This administration has been squirreling a little bit of money away each year in our capital plan, and I just wanted to speak about that a little bit. Do you know how much we have saved so far? We've been squirreling away a little bit?
Well, we have $2 million towards this project. This project will probably be done in two phases, but in addition to the water mains, the, each phase will also include with the water main replacement is improvement of drainage on the sidewalk areas and street lighting within the Walks. So street lighting is, is very limited there, and the way the circuits are laid out, when one light goes out, they can lose a couple of blocks at a time. The design report will look at all four of the major utilities there, drainage, wastewater, street lighting, and the water mains. And we will attack the water mains and the street lighting and the drainage first, and then eventually we'll get to the sewer mains, which in the design report will come up with some ways to, to take care of the sewer mains. Sewer mains and the water mains are both behind the homes. There's about 300 homes affected. When you put in new water mains, the Nassau County Health Department requires a 10-foot separation from the sewer line now, so there'd be no way to replace the sewer lines and the, the water mains in existing areas, in the existing easements with the sewer mains back there. So this, this project will allow us later on to come back and improve the wastewater collection system also.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
Just have a quick question. Do you have any general idea how long it would take to generate the report?
I, you know, I didn't bring the proposal up with me, but the report will probably take 60 to 90 days. There's going to be needed a significant amount of surveying in the area for elevations and things of that nature, and also finding out where some of the homes have been, you know, encroached on easements and things of that nature. So a big portion of this will be the survey and layout of what exists there, which really is not a lot of information right now.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Is this just an above-ground assessment, or are they going to be scoping lines and things like that?
Well, they will be, you don't scope the water mains, but they will be TVing the sewer mains to find out what kind of condition they're in and how deep they are and everything else so that we have a good look inside the sewer mains, so that will help develop some different technologies that are available to, to redo the sewer lines at a later date.
So they're going to map out the whole, because to this day, we don't even know where some of the...
Yeah, the technical report will map out the entire Walks area, which covers 300 homes. The first part of the project will be to do the water mains in one half, second part will do the second half. So we have, myself and my deputy commissioner have reached out to some of the neighbors there and had them take us for a walk through it so that this is, you know, it's a newer area to me, so I wanted to get a good feel for what's back there, so.
And after the report's in, when do you see actual work potentially begin?
I would say potential work will be in the spring of, I want to make sure I get this right, in the spring of about 2019.
Nineteen. So I'm about a year from now.
After the study's done, we'll come back with recommendations.
Right.
We'll meet with the neighbors, and then we will generate the design drawings and specifications for, for an actual bid.
Okay. Anybody else?
Has this contractor done work for the city before?
This is an engineering firm, not a contractor, and this engineering firm has done work for the city in the past also.
Okay, successfully, I assume?
Successful, yes.
Okay. And just, go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And then just one final, normally, the resolutions say lowest responsible bidder. This wording is a little different, most qualified and best suited.
That's because this is a professional service, not a, not a, a public works contract.
Okay. So what was the other bid? Do you know offhand?
The pricing on the other bid, there were three bids. One was higher than this proposal and one was lower. This proposal was approximately $200,000. The lowest was $100,000, and the highest was $280,000.
Okay. So they, the low, obviously, I'm assuming wasn't picked because you just didn't think we were going to get what we paid for?
Yeah. And not only that, when we, when we do requests for proposals from professional consultants, we have them submit their costs on a separate envelope, sealed envelope. We do the evaluation first, and then we pick out who we think has the best evaluation. Quite frankly, DMB's valuation of proposal was actually the best, and they also, I think the way they proposed doing this will probably save us over half a million dollars on the project. So like, once we opened the, the pricing, we did see it was a little more, but I, I really don't think the lowest firm put enough money in it to do the initial survey.
Okay. So we'll get it on the back end?
We'll, we'll save much more on the back end.
Plus, if I'm correct, John, this was the only company that came up with the novel idea of using the streets to create minimal disruption, and that's where we'll make our savings, because when we do a long run like that, it's a lot cheaper than trying to run all those lines up and down the Walks.
Yeah, we'll save 1,750 feet of water main.
1,750 feet of water? That's a lot of water.
Once the, once the report is actually completed, will this be shared with the public and/or will it be shared here in terms of...
Well, obviously, first it would be shared with the city council, but then I would share it with the people in the Walks. I would ask to have a meeting with them and, you know, go review the project with them. Because, you know, unlike most of the streets, people, access to these homes is a little more difficult than on a regular street, so obviously, this is going to take a lot more input from, from residents and a lot more communication so that they can get on with their daily lives and not really feel the disruption of the work. But in the long run, it will definitely improve their, their homestead, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Anyone from the public? Good evening.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Mike Delory, 6 June Walk.
Thank you.
Fully support this project. John Morando, myself, Tom Nag, I live at 25 December Walk, met, I guess, maybe six or nine months ago. We did a walkthrough with the Commissioner, Tom, who lives between Grand Boulevard and Lindell, and I live between Grand and New York. We had a good idea of what the problems might be, so in answer to a lot of your concerns or will be, as far as the communication to the residents. We've, we've talked about planning that. We, I believe we have the location set up, so whenever that does happen, we will have our internal community input to get as many people there to ask as many questions as possible. As a follow-up, those that can't attend, for whatever reason, we will communicate to them, and I mentioned to the Commissioner, we will walk, we will handout, we will give as much information to everybody. So we're, we're going to work together to get the message out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delory, and I know you've been involved with a lot of things happening in the city, and I know we appreciate it, and all the help you can give us with making sure the residents are aware is greatly appreciated, and as you know, necessary. So thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing no hands, next item.
Item number four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for various tree-related work with the lowest responsible bidder.
Okay, this is a pretty straightforward resolution. We do need to continually work on our trees, remove the dead ones. The pruning is not to do topiary things like Disney does, but to clear off dead branches and things like those, things like that. And this is something that's necessary for Long Beach Tree City to have.
Excellent. And the, the trees being planted will fit into our master tree plan? They will? Anyone from the council have any questions?
Just one. Why can't the city workforce do this? Because we do see them out there working on the gardens and things like that.
We're going to be planting 165 trees with this program. We really don't have the full staff to, to take on that kind of a job. And, and the, I think the other nice thing about doing it with a contractor, these trees will be guaranteed for the first year. So if we plant a tree and we lose it, and you will lose a certain percentage of trees in a planting program. If we plant and we lose it, we really don't have any guarantees. If the contractor plants it and we lose a tree, that, for that next year, they will come back and replace it at their cost. So, so I think it makes sense in this case to do this with, with a contractor.
It's a one-year guarantee?
It's a one-year guarantee from the time they finish their overall contract. So once the 165 trees are in place, then the, the one year will tick as the contract's completed.
Great. Okay. Any other questions from the council? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, next item.
Item number five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the agreement for engineering services to prepare a solid waste management plan, SWMP update for the city of Long Beach.
Okay, this is regulated by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. It is a program that we have to be part of, and this is a reasonable fund to develop that plan.
All right. One more time, Commissioner? Third time's the charm? So we had already done something like this, and now we're just amending it? Can you just, just talk about that for a second? Not by choice?
Sure. We, we hired back, the city hired back in 2014, Camp Tress will be key to develop our local solid waste management plan, which was required under Part 360 of New York State D E C regulations. We submitted that plan. We never heard back from them. On February 5th of 2018, we've got a long list of items they want to change in the plan, and in addition, they recently passed new regulations for the, for Part 360 that have to be added to the plan. So we have a laundry list of about 30 items that have to be looked into. Camp Tressa McKee did the original plan, was almost a $200,000 project. If we were to go out and get another engineer to do this, we'd probably be looking at the same price, but since it's their intellectual, you know, document, they can update it for us much easier than, than going out to somebody else. So, and they'd be much more up on the new regulations.
So when you say "they" and "them" and "they" required it, it's the New York State Department?
The New York State D E C, I'm sorry.
D E C?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Any comments from the public? Seeing none? I think that's it for you, John. Next item.
Item number six is a resolution confirming, confirming the appointment of a member to the zoning board of appeals of the city of Long Beach.
Prior to appointing this person, I'd like to just thank Mary Lane Filer for her service to the zoning board. It's not a paid position. No one's going to know this, but in Long Beach zoning is a little controversial, and Ms. Filer served admirably on the, on the zoning board, and we look forward very much to working with Wanda Brooks as our newest member of the zoning board.
Any, any comments from the council?
Just a clarification. It says to fill the expired term of Ms. Filer, if the term was expired, how is there a remainder of an expired term?
It's, I think it's just a matter of wording, but the way it works under the public officers' law is that once a person exceeds their term, they become a holdover. It's Section 5 of the public officers' law, and they stay in that position conceivably as, as long as, as long, I'm sorry, they stay in that position conceivably as long as needed until a replacement member is picked. So I, I think it's just a matter of wording.
So she's not completing a term, she's really just a three-year appointment?
Starting today.
Starting today?
Yeah.
Okay. And just one of the, are they given any training to prepare them for their service on the, on the board?
Oh, definitely. We, we provide all of our new Z B A members with extensive training once they're on. But the way it works in zoning in particular is that there's really no way to prepare, for anyone to prepare for what they're about to encounter on the zoning board in advance. It's something that's learned on the job, and we do as much in-house training as we possibly can before they take the days.
Anyone else from the council? Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing, seeing no one here, next item.
Item number seven is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive the off-street parking requirements for premise 68 West Park Avenue, street floor, Long Beach, New York, regarding a tobacco vape convenience store. This, this item is for publication only, and a hearing will be held on April 3rd at 7:00 p.m.
Okay, and in relation to that item, although it is going to be heard in a couple weeks from now, I'd just like to remind folks that it is not in our purview to discriminate against a, a valid legal business. What we're only discussing here at the council is the off-street parking waiver. So with that, we go to the vote.
Item number one is a resolution granting waiver of off-street parking requirements regarding premise 248 West Park Avenue, street floor, Long Beach, New York, regarding a real estate office. Who will introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
And who will second?
I will.
On the vote? Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Aramo?
Yes, and welcome back to Long Beach.
All right. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the County of Nassau for the purpose of undertaking a community development program under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended and Title II of the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990 as amended for inclusion in the city's community development program for the 2018-2019 44th year. Who will introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
And who will second?
I will.
On the vote, Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
First, I just want to thank Marvin for his presentation and for all of his service over the year and, and in the coming year, and working with so many organizations in our community to ensure that these, these funds are distributed. And as you can see from his presentation, they really impact our community, so yes, I, I vote yes.
President Aramo?
Yes.
The third item is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for engineering services for the preparation of a technical report for the area known as the Walks. Who will introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Who will second?
I will.
Okay, on the vote, Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Aramo?
Yes.
Item number four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the various tree-related work with the lowest responsible, responsible bidder. Who will introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
He will.
Who will second?
I will.
On the vote, Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Aramo?
Yes.
Item number five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the agreement for engineering services to prepare a solid waste management plan, SWMP update for the city of Long Beach. Who will introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Who will second?
I will.
On the vote, Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Aramo?
Yes.
Item number six is a resolution confirming the appointment of a member to the zoning board of appeals of the city of Long Beach. Who will introduce and, who will introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Who will second?
I will.
On the vote, Councilmember Bendo?
Yes, and thank you for agreeing to serve, Ms. Brooks.
Councilmember Mandel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes, and congratulations.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes, and thank you for volunteering your time to serve in this way.
President Aramo?
I'd like to also thank Ms. Filer for her service, and welcome, Mrs. Brooks, and thank you for volunteering. The city could use your service, so I vote yes.
Item number seven is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive the off-street parking requirements for premise 68 West Park Avenue, street floor, Long Beach, New York, regarding a tobacco vape convenience store. Who will introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Who will second?
I will.
On the vote? Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Aramo?
Yes.
Who will make a motion to close the meeting?
I will.
Who will second?
I will.
On the vote? Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Aramo?
Yes.
Okay, before we get on to our good and welfare section, we're just going to complete our women of distinction. I think, I think they have arrived, right? So, if the council wants to join me at the front, and Ms. Moore can do her presentation.
Okay, so, earlier we had acknowledged the contributions of some women in our community, and first of all, thank you for coming out in this weather. And I know here, you're here, you're the project manager of Girls Inc. of Long Island, so I want to thank you for your service in that capacity. Girls Inc. is an incredible program that, and an organization that works to assist our next generation of women here in Long Beach. The program now has 15 high schools, high school students, and they meet every single Monday, and it's a number of different programs that work on empowering young women, empowering their image and how they feel, and their involvement in the community, and this is a great opportunity for us to thank you for your service on behalf of the entire council. So, thank you very much, and I have this. Whereas the city of Long Beach wishes to recognize Women's, to recognize Women's History Month in honor of the countless accomplishments and contributions of women to our nation and our city, whereas the city of Long Beach does desire to publicly acknowledge Girls Inc., which has partnered with the Long Beach School District to help achieve its mission of delivering life-changing programs to young girls. The girls involved in the program are between the ages of 14 and 18 and live either in Long Beach or in Island Park. The girls faithfully come to Girls Inc. each Monday, excited and looking forward to the different activities that are offered. And whereas Girls Inc. in partnership with schools focuses on the development of the whole girl, she learns the value of self, taking risks, and discover and develop her inherent strengths. The combination of long-lasting mentoring relationships and pro-girl environment and research-based programming equips girls to navigate gender, economic, and social barriers, and grow up healthy and educated and independent. Informed girls and their families, Girls Inc. also advocates for legislation and policies to increase opportunities and rights for all girls. And now, therefore, the city council and the city manager of the city of Long Beach, in recognition of their exemplary service to the community, proudly presents this proclamation to you on their behalf. It's signed by Council President Anthony Aramo, myself, Councilmember Bendo, Councilmember Mandell, Councilwoman Anissa Moore, and the acting city manager, Michael Tagney.
Thank you. Unfortunately, Cindy Scott, who we were actually recognizing this evening, unfortunately, her son was ill tonight, and she was not able to come this evening, but we will recognize her at a later date for her contributions with respect to the organization called Entitled True Potential Tutoring. And so, she was actually one of the women of distinction this evening, but we will recognize her at a later date, and we also hope all is well with her son. So, unfortunately, she could not attend this evening's event.
Okay. We'll have her here definitely another time. Okay, good and welfare, three minutes of uninterrupted time. As former President Torres always reminded us, we treat each other with respect and always maintain decorum. First up, we have Mr. Michael DeLorey, and he has a few special guests with him, so come on up. Name and address for the record.
Mike DeLorey, 62 Walk. I'm here to introduce Justin Cornell.
Do I need to state my address, too?
Just state your name, that's fine.
All right, Justin Cornell. Good evening, Council President Aramo, councilmembers Mandell, Moore, Diamond, Bendu, and acting city manager, Michael Tagney. My name is Justin Cornell, I'm a 10th grade student at Long Beach High School, and a member of the Boy Scout Troop 215 out of Long Beach. I would like to thank Commissioner Tagney, Lieutenant Ryan, Mr. Corbett, and the members of the Auxiliary Police Department for all this, for all their assistance in helping me get my project off the ground. I will be giving you guys the list of the bus stops throughout Long Beach. On the paper, the bus stops highlighted in yellow are the bus stops that are already completed. The bus stops that are in green are outside of the city limits, part of this Eagle Scout project. I will be painting all of the bus stops in Long Beach in front of them yellow. I have already received the paint from the police department as well, as well as cones. My job as the Eagle, my job to become an Eagle Scout is to manage and coordinate the entire process from start to finish, to obtain permission, gather supplies, and coordinate and oversee every location. My target start date for this project will be April 4th. We're hoping to start in the west end of Long Beach, given weather permitting. We can't do it in the rain or the snow. I will be available to answer any of your questions, and Commissioner Tagney does have my contact information if you do have any questions at any further dates. And I'd like to thank you all again for the support on my Eagle Scout project.
Okay. Well, I think on behalf of the city council, I think we'd like to thank you for volunteering to do this, but also congratulate you on attempting to, I'm sure you will, reach Eagle Scout. I think everyone knows that's a really high bar to reach, and not easy, and not too many people do. So, I would like to congratulate you just for even trying to do that, and I'm sure we'll have you back here when you do in fact become an Eagle Scout.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the council?
Yeah, I just wanted to say congratulations, Justin. Thank you for this project. I think it's an awesome project, but also, I'd like to just commend you on this evening's presentation. I think everyone in the audience would agree that this was a tremendous presentation, and again, we wish you all the best with respect to your love for the city and your commitment to making a difference. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have the Honorable Fran Adelson.
Good evening, Fran Adelson, 74 Harmon Street. I heard a lot of talk about empowering children tonight, so I'm really glad to be speaking about this because that's what it is that we're planning for this Saturday. This Saturday, as you know by now, March 24th, myself, Darlene Tagney, and Long Beach High School Junior Class President Fiona Aramo, thank you for your daughter, are hosting a March for Life rally in Kennedy Plaza, where one of over 700 rallies taking place that day in support of the students' response to the horrific tragedy that took place at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. After that tragedy, the students, they basically stood up and said, "Never again." They've shown both courage and strength, and they need our support in demanding common-sense changes to current control laws. No student should ever have to be or even feel unsafe in their schools or their community. They're our children, and they're our future. We will have speakers at this program, we will have auto-registration, we will also have petitions to sign. It's the March for Our Life petition, we're hooked up with them, so if you go online and you look at them, Long Beach is actually on the map. So, I'm very proud and excited to be doing this, and I'm hoping, I'm inviting council members to come and speak. I'm hoping that some of you or all of you, or whoever can come will be able to attend. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for organizing this very important event.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have Lou Dubau. There he is. Name and address.
Lou Dubau. I've got a picture, if you could pass that around to them. I missed the last couple of meetings, so I missed some, some things I'd like to talk about. 12 years ago, Kirkwood Street where I lived was rebuilt, and a new check valve was installed that had costed about $3,000, I was told at the time. This was a new design that would stop flooding from the bay backing up into the street. This worked one time only. Debris got caught in it, and it's been a problem ever since. I've complained about it since then, and was told that they need to be maintained, which they are rarely done, if ever. I have at least a solution to solve the large debris, such as the beer cans and soda cans that go through. The sewer grate by me is open. I don't have a picture of that, but you can see from that picture that that's a closed design.
You're talking about the curbside, right?
On the curbside, right. So, what happens, someone throws a beer can out, a soda can, a bag of garbage will wind up down in there. I showed this picture actually to the commissioner back in May when I took the picture, and the Commissioner of Public Works said they're looking into something. I don't know what's been done about that since then, but I have a simple solution. A piece of steel welded to that end of it to block the debris from coming in will be a temporary solution as opposed to replacing the whole thing. I think that might, might help alleviate the, the solution, alleviate the problem with some of the large debris going in there. I know John had talked about, they contacted somebody about redesigning that, and I don't know what kind of design we're coming up with, or you guys are coming up with in terms of the check valve, but that's a problem. And tonight, my cars are parked down the street because this street will get flooded again. That's one thing. The other thing I want to mention, as you know, there was another school shooting today where two students were shot in critically, in critical condition, and the shooter was shot and killed by a, an armed resource officer. If this armed resource officer was not there to intercede, how many more students would have been shot and possibly killed? I know that the commissioner, as well as the school board, is not in favor of having armed guards in the, in the schools, but maybe that position should be reconsidered. I mean, the thing on Saturday is great, but I think, personally, I feel that an armed guard in the school, not teachers, teachers are not trained for that, they have to be someone who's professionally trained, maybe retired policeman, retired army, but I just feel that this, this will keep going on unless there, something's done to stop it. So, I think both, both are part of a solution to this, so that's just my, my comment on it.
So... If I could just, one clarification, I have taken no position on school, people in the schools having fire...
I thought I read that in the local paper recently. No? Okay.
Not for me.
I was, as far as that goes, I was just going to say we would not take comments on school policy.
No, no, I understand, I understand that, but Mike, I thought you had said something. Could I ask what your position is as police commissioner?
I'm very concerned with it, but I'd have to study it a little more. It's not something I would come off out of hand. As an example, when the last big gun awareness issue was when Governor Cuomo initiated the SAFE Act, there wasn't enough thought that went into that legislation because the day it was passed, every New York State police officer, or every police officer in New York State became a felon because there was no exemption called for us to carry our weapons. So, before I would venture anywhere on this, I'd have to do some research where it did exist. This is a great success story, which would bode well for it.
That's terrific.
But I don't, I don't know in the long run if that's the, the best choice, and I'd have to do some research.
I think it has to be a combination of better gun control laws in dealing with the people who are mentally ill, stopping them from getting guns, but having, I think, an armed officer in the school, not necessarily walking around, you know, carrying a, you know, an AK-47 or something, but just something, as today where the situation was, where it stopped the shooter from causing more havoc.
So, if I could just go back to the sewer, that's okay.
Sorry, yeah. Oh, yeah, go back to the sewer, that's...
That's a great suggestion. I haven't seen this before, so I would like to discuss this with the commissioner. Does everybody see how it's closed off here? This is where they, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Right, there's a, it was taken on, in the west end. I was coming back from a bike ride one day, saw that, and even though I have my car parked out in front.
Maybe, maybe that's a good holdover, temporary, correct?
The temporary thing, just to stop the, the larger debris, which is a problem.
We do know we have, we have an issue with the tide flex valves, and we are discussing different options, and hopefully, we will get that settled soon. It's unfortunate that this has been going on for decades and decades and decades, but hopefully, we'll get to a place where it doesn't happen.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dubau. Ms. Please just state your name for the record.
Mary Volasevich, Long Beach. I first want to start off with, I have nothing but respect for volunteers, and it's volunteers that get a lot of work done. With that being said, about three and a half years ago, I asked Mr. Schneierman when there would be another state exam for firefighters. He kind of brushed over it, but called me the next day, and we had an extensive discussion. He gave me his views, I gave him my views, and we've come now to a point where we're down to, I believe it's 15, and some of them can retire soon. So, I'm asking again, when are you going to request? The police department has had several tests. You have hired many new police officers since I've been here, and that's almost 40 years. Okay? I have not seen, the last one was about 10 or 12 years ago when Dave Olinsky got on. Okay? Mr. Schneierman also told me his plan on that privatization of medical personnel on the ambulances was going to save us quite a bit of money. My understanding is the overtime, the overtime is sky-high on the fire department filling in, and that's, that's going to be a repercussion somewhere down the line. So, I'm asking, one more time, when are you going to ask the state for an exam? What are the response times? Have they been improved from the time they leave the firehouse until they return back to Long Beach? And at night, we only have one ambulance on, or do we have a second ambulance? We got an ambulance for volunteers, why is there one ambulance at night? I've, I've been told there's one ambulance at night, there is not a second one, except for volunteers. And when you have someone, I watched it on my block, 90-year-old woman fall down the stairs, 2:43 showed up, stabilized, called for an ambulance, 45 minutes, 45 minutes for a 90-year-old woman laying on her floor. You wouldn't want it for your mother, I wouldn't want it for mine. So, again, when are we going to do this, or are we just waiting for them to all fade out?
I don't know if the commissioner, we're fortunate to have the commissioner here. If you want to speak about response times and how many ambulances we have at night, I don't actually know offhand, but in terms of the test, do you want to speak about that? In terms of the test?
Ms. Volasevich, are you familiar with what a preferred eligible list is? Do you know what that is?
You have them for the police department.
No, but I meant, do you know what a preferred list is?
No.
All right. The firefighters that were laid off previously, they have to be given priority before you can bring in new firefighters. There's four, there are four people on that list, and that's why there hasn't been a new test, because at this point, it'd be disingenuous to offer a new test, and we know we have to go through that entire list. It's also expensive for the city to administer a test and to proceed through the normal sub-service process.
How many do we have on, on a list for a police department for future hires?
I don't, I mean, I don't have that, those numbers yet, but there's no preferred list either for the police. There is a preferred list for the firefighters.
I understand that.
Okay, that's, that's the answer, though.
But you have four people, how many do you have on the police list?
Almost 1,000.
1,000, okay.
It's two different types of lists.
I, I understand that. I understand. What you're saying is priority, that you have to give them the opportunity to hire them back, which in my mind, I wouldn't come back, but that's me. But they, you have 1,000, ready to fill anything we've got there. I, you know, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Okay. Can we just speak about the response times and the nighttime ambulance and the who's due? Because I think we have three different ambulances, right?
That, right now, the response of our ambulance is in flux based upon some arbitrator's decision and a...
and a Supreme Court case settlement that we're working on, our overall procedure. But most of the time during the day, our primary ambulance is the ambulance 2319 manned by the paramedics of the Professional Firefighters Association. From 9:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night, presently, our second due ambulance is from South Nassau Community's Hospital. Our third due ambulance is our volunteers. At 9:00 o'clock at night, the South Nassau ambulance goes off duty, making now the volunteer ambulance the second due ambulance. Anytime the volunteers are sent out for an ambulance call in Long Beach, the paid engine goes out with it, you know, first to begin care. The paid engine is an advanced life support engine, fully equipped with all the cardiac equipment, medication, anything that needs to be done while awaiting the arrival of the ambulance. The overall response time of our EMS system has dropped since the pre-deployed ambulance is out in the field the majority of the time and responds almost immediately. So our response times overall have dropped. There are instances where, and I don't know of one of 45 minutes, I'll talk to Mrs. Volasevich and get the information on that one call and see what went on, but I can't tell, I monitor the calls 24 hours a day. My wife hates it. I listen to them, I know what's going on. I don't know of an instance where anybody waited 45 minutes for an ambulance. I can tell you our procedure is totally different, and if an ambulance isn't responding within seven minutes, we have procedures in place to take care of that. But if there is an instance where maybe the system failed, I will look into it.
In the summertime when we seem to be a little bit busier, do we have the more career guys on paid ambulances? Is there an overlap?
Well, that, right now, with the new procedure coming out based upon an arbitrator's decision, there are times 24 hours a day where the second ambulance, the second due ambulance will be staffed with members of the Professional Firefighters Union.
Okay.
Can you just provide some kind of measurement in terms of some, an average with respect to the response time? Because I haven't heard any numbers, and I'm just curious.
I don't, you know, I'm not prepared to supply that. It's very easy for me to run a report, and I can get that to the council members on our average response time for our EMS and fire calls. I can tell you the last time we looked at it, we are far below the national average as far as response times on both EMS and fire.
Thank you, Commissioner.
If you could get that to, that report to the council in the next few days, that would be great. Thank you.
And this was also done, this new scheduling and all was also done in response to an ICMA investigation and report that says this is the best way to go.
That is correct.
Okay, but I just, I just want to just point out, I mean, in the spirit of transparency, can we get this information out to the public? Because if we are below the national average and we have something to be proud of, so...
It has been put out before. I know Ryan's not here tonight, but there have been presentations at council meetings with our response times and comparing them to the national average, but we will definitely get that out. I know it's been in newsletters and presentations at the council meetings, and I mean, that information is public information. Like I said, we can easily run a report and make that available, but I will get it to the council this week.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
One final question. Could you address Ms. Volasevich's comment about the overtime? How is the cost to operate the department now compared to before the ICMA changeover with the paid paramedics? Because the overtime has gone up significantly.
I don't have the figures in front of me, but I can tell you that based upon a Supreme Court settlement, we're mandated to have four firefighters on duty at a time. If somebody does take off, that position does have to be filled with some overtime. There had, part of the legal agreement, and maybe Mr. Agostis can help, some of that is covered by straight time and not overtime.
Initially, there was a spike in overtime after the restructure, and that is starting to settle down now as the paramedic program has really settled in. But what's important to know is that overall, the expenses associated with the Fire Department are back way down because of the overhead that's intended to benefits, pension contributions associated with firefighter salaries, especially long-term costs associated with firefighter salaries. And the overtime has started to, has started, like I said, sort of settled down.
Didn't we make an agreement last year with the Fire Department, with the Fire Union to cap overtime?
Yes, that agreement accompanies what's known as a minimum staffing plus, so there's, they're guaranteed four members on the engine for all the ball factors. And what that overtime arrangement does is to create certain caps that would otherwise be overtime generators due to the minimum staffing arrangement. So there are cost savings associated with those caps in the settlement agreement of the Article 78 last year as well.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Nora Egan. I'm sorry? Okay, thank you. Ms. Helen Alessi. Oh, she left? Okay. Ms. Alessi left.
Please state your name and address for the record. Jane Fisher, 215 East Broadway. Longtime listener, first-time speaker.
Oh.
So, happy to see everybody. I just wanted to say that we've been talking tonight, and it's, there's been a national conversation about empowerment of youth, and we've seen that with the students from Florida. You know, it's incredible what they're doing. And Ms. Alessi was speaking before about the program that she'd like to have supported for the Latino Civic Association, the leadership program, and I just wanted to throw my support to that because it is a wonderful program. There just isn't enough civic engagement for young people, and giving them real-world experience is just a terrific idea in my view, and I would be volunteering in the program. I've worked with the Latino Civic Association on another project, and it is incredible the way they manage things and considering that it's, you know, a small staff, the things that they accomplish, and to provide this type of in-depth program for young people seems invaluable to me. Just wanted to mention that.
Okay. Thank you so much. Ms. Dina Fiori. Name and address for the record.
My name is Dina Fiori. I will not supply my address. As you know, it's not necessary, and if you look around the room, we have the reason why we don't do that.
I just have to ask.
Okay.
Thank you.
First thing off the list that was missing on a lot of things that happened in the city list Sunday was Empty Bowls Project. I don't know if anybody up here attended, but it is a significantly well-run event, and it does a lot of good for the community of Long Beach as it pertains to feeding hungry from the MLK Center to the soup kitchens across Long Beach. So I think it should be recognized and noted as such. The following questions I have apply to both the city manager's position or the search for the city manager's position and the search for comptroller. We would like to know, as you know, we've known this position, especially city manager is no, nothing personal to you, I know, I know where you want to go, and that's out. But we've known this has been, this was going to have to be filled since November of 2017. We are now in close to April of 2018, probably close six months into the process, so we would like to know where the council is in that process. The questions that are being asked is how many resumes have been received to date? How many interviews have been held to date? How many candidates, again, for both positions, not only the city manager and the comptroller? And when do we expect to have a city manager in place or onboard?
So I would just say that we received over 50 resumes, I think is a good estimate, between 50 and 60, and I'm not prepared to answer any of the questions at this time.
Okay, so when can we expect those questions to be answered?
I think hopefully we'll be making a decision fairly soon, but that's something that we have to decide as a council, so I'm-
So there's no ETA? When our acting city manager says he's going to leave in April, can we expect that position to be filled sometime during the course of April?
Since we're conducting, you know, the search, I'm just not prepared to answer those questions. I don't know if anyone else wants to, but I'm not prepared to answer the question.
Is anybody else prepared to answer the questions?
But I'm not prepared to answer the question.
I think it's unfair to the residents of the city of Long Beach to be left in the dark, and I think it's time that, you know, are we going to have an 11th hour placement of somebody just as another interim when our current city manager wants to go?
If I could just respond, I'm not going to obviously go into any of the details because I think it's a decision that the council has to make together. We have an acting city manager who has said he will stay until we select another individual. We obviously won't be left with no city manager, and it's a difficult decision, and we want to make sure that we have the appropriate individual. So it's a slow process, and it takes time, and we need to ensure that we've gone through an exhaustive search and really understand who we're selecting. So I, while it's taken a few months and we knew we could prepare for it, it's not an easy decision, and there's a lot of factors that need to go into consideration. So I think that we'll get there as soon as we can.
Okay, so in two weeks when we come back, we should have some more information? If it's, we're in the process.
I don't, I don't think it's, as we had, I had said from the beginning, I don't think it's appropriate to put a specific timeline on a search for a person to essentially run the city. It's a difficult position, and we need to make sure that the, you asked me a question, so I'm just going to answer. We need to make sure that the person has all of the skills and the priorities that we share. So I think it's, it's an exhaustive and long process.
No problem. And I would also request, because it's the last time we had a storm, there was not, no information communicated via robo-calls, and I believe there was a lot of posting on the city pages to that fact, maybe since we have storm starting or coming that we may look to do that for tomorrow to keep the residents updated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And Ms. Judy Vining.
Morning.
Hi, I'm sorry. I'm talking about Mr. Dubau's suggestion here.
That's okay.
Name and address for the record.
Judy Vining, 410 East Broadway. I'm going to be a little schizophrenic personally, I'm going to talk personally. About a year ago this time, some of my neighbors and I came and asked the council to consider some from Long Beach Road to Maple, north side of Broadway, resident-only parking. About three months later, or somewhere around June, I came back and said whatever happened, and I think Mr. Schneierman's answer was, well, we needed to get in touch with the state to do that. So I guess I'm asking you to think about it again because confluence of the hotel, the valet service that they run, which is not only for their hotel but also for beach parking, the permanent surfing beach, it makes it interesting, that end of town, about as interesting as it is in the West End. So, which is kind of why I got a ride here and hoping for a ride home, because I wasn't moving my car tonight. Let me switch. As Director of Long Beach Aware, we had a coalition meeting last Wednesday night, and we're approached by, I want to just get it right, prior to that, to come to the meeting, we're approached by a group of residents from West End residents, and they were talking about Minnesota's and the fact that there were some issues there, less some than some before, and the residents banded together and really thought they were not a good neighbor. And what was coming out of this was, and I don't know about that, that's not our place, but what was coming out of this was that, as you know by law, if they're going to apply for SLA license, the city clerk has to be notified 30 days before they apply. And apparently, this group came, found out that the clerk was notified on February 15th and February 28th. I'm not sure why there were two notifications, but the fact of the matter is, and was asked, asked who the principles were so that they could meet with them and say, listen, let's, you know, these are the problems in the past. That part is irrelevant. What I'm talking to you about is something we've asked you before. If we as a group or the community can be notified when you are notified, that's probably the only avenue or window of opportunity that anyone has if they have an objection to voice it, because it takes longer than 30 days to foil something. And once it goes to the SLA, we all know that there are legislative mandates to grant licenses, and so there's no, you can't comment on something that you don't know is about to happen. So that was the request of the West End residents from Minnesota Street, and I can't remember the other two streets, as well as Long Beach Aware. So if you could consider that, that would be great.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Vining. Okay, that's it for this evening. I want to thank everyone for coming. I hope to see everyone this Saturday at the March for Lives. And just please get home safe. It's a little slick out there now. And the March for Life is, it's on 2/4, and it's from 2 to 4. So, hope to see you there.